Mics are on.
Okay, now we're okay.
Now we are, okay. Now we're gonna open it up. I opened up the City of Escalon Planning Commission meeting for December 17th, 2024. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Van Dyke, present. Commissioner Sarkozy.
Here.
Commissioner Willis.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Dunbar.
Here.
Commissioner Chair Castellanos.
Here.
Thank you.
We have a flag salute. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to note that anybody that has a cellphone, pager, or other device, you need to set it on silence or vibrate unless you are on duty, emergency responder, please. First item on the consent calendar is the approval of the special meeting on November 19th. Any discussion, motion, corrections?
Will we accept a minute?
A second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the Liberty Park specific plan fee program. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, just one second. Okay. Thank you, Chair. Jalen French, city staff. Also joined by our engineering team in the audience, Nick. And online, we have EPS consultant Jess. So this is the team that helped prepare the plan area fee nexus study, the full nexus study, which is in your packet today. To reset the conversation from last month, we do have a specific plan area that was approved a number of years ago, 2007. The specific plan specifically foresaw that the construction of public improvements to serve the plan area would be funded by a variety of mechanisms, including, one, a plan area fee. So since '07, this has been, you know, sort of something that has been contemplated as the project moved forward. It was something that staff implemented. The plan area fee, in essence, is a way to collect monies to install infrastructure from a diverse group. If you have a smaller development with one developer, that developer puts in all the infrastructure. That's a cost that is unseen to the city. But in a specific plan area, in this specific plan area, that is about 180 acres, you have one development, in this case Weldway, which is 20 acres, that development should not and could not be responsible for putting in all the infrastructure. So you collect a fee as development progresses. You get to, you know, a certain state and with that funding over multiple developments, and then you install infrastructure. So the fee before you is being prepared under the authority granted by the Mitigation Fee Act, contained in California Government Code, Section 66000. As I mentioned, we did retain a consultant EPS to help us prepare this nexus study and essentially a fee program. So that's kind of the overview. You will well recall, good discussion at the last planning commission meeting, a number of questions, most of which or all of which, we hope we have addressed in the staff report. There were basically four major topics that were discussed, and they are, three of them are included in the staff report, and I'll just mention the fourth one. The first was really about the cost estimates of the proposed infrastructure. We do have a little bit of an awkward situation where we had cost estimates really originally done in 2007. Now we're looking at $20, $24. A lot has changed in that 17 years. So how did we estimate these fees? We did primarily use the construction cost index. This is a industry standard index to use for these types of efforts. But we didn't just rely on the CCI. We also spot checked unit costs based on, you know, newer projects, more current projects to ensure that the CCI was tracking with not just pulling it forward 17 years, but actually consistent with the unit costs. And then what we did is, you know, we looked at a couple of projects from a couple of years ago and see if the CCI was tracking on a project that occurred a couple of years ago. So we, you know, we checked it in a couple of different ways. I will tell you, no fee program, no, you know, demographic projection is ever perfect. We are looking into the future to try to estimate what the cost will be of infrastructure into the future. That's a known sort of, you know, quirk of the process. We do have the ability to update the fee program and the nexus study if we need to. It's not something we want to do all the time because there's a cost associated. But we've looked at these cost estimates in a couple of different ways to ensure they are as accurate as possible. You know, in full disclosure, we'll just walk through some of the numbers. If you were to look at the included infrastructure in $2007, the fee for an industrial project would have been about $16,000 per acre. Just, just the CCI, just, you know, $2007 to $2024 doubles that cost to about $32,000 per acre. So, you know, just looking at past infrastructure would be $32,000 an acre. The specific plan was conceptual in some cases. So as the project's moving forward, as we know more about the infrastructure that's needed today, there were a few items that were needed. We originally contemplated adding a well because that new area would require additional well services. We chose not to include the well because we likely are going to go to surface water into the future. The council has not approved it. I am not suggesting that that is a done deal, but it's, you know, we're heading in that direction. So we pulled out the $2 million well, but we do feel like a tank is needed. A tank will provide, you know, fire suppression coverage in an area that is really sort of isolated. If infrastructure isn't, you know, extended across 120, you really just have sort of one line coming in. It's not connected to another line while it would be looped in the system, you know, in the plan area fee, plan area, excuse me. There's not really other connections. And so feel like a well, excuse me, a tank is needed in that area for fire purposes. That is not a cheap cost. It's about $1 million. There are a couple other project just requirements that were not included in the '07 fee, sound walls, undergrounding utilities, and gateways, monuments, signage. So if you add those things, that increases the cost to, you know, just over $40,000, roughly, you know, $45,000, $48,000 per acre. So that is the math, and that is how we got there. These fees are largely technical. It is a list of infrastructure which is included in the back of your agenda package. It is the cost estimates, and it's divided by acreage or square footage, you know, whatever the case may be. But in this case acreage and then by land use designation, basically. So that is, that is the fee. That is how we estimated the fee. So the second item that was discussed, and this is kind of an add-on to that, pardon me. There were some questions on how much it would cost to extend the infrastructure across the tracks and across 120. In today's dollars, we think that would be between 800,000 and 1 million, depending on where it was pulled over. If it's pulled over in the intersection of Brennan, it'll be closer to the 1 million. If Murphy Ranch happens to move forward, if it's approved, and there's a place to extend the infrastructure, which is one of the things that is being planned for, it would be about the $800,000 mark. So that's, in the deferred utilities agreement, there's a scenario which, you know, would require the first development, in this case Weldway, to extend that infrastructure if the city doesn't extend it or if other developers don't come on. So that's the cost of that. There was a number provided by a resident at the last meeting that was a bit high in terms of the estimation, so we have looked at that. The now second item, we did confirm that the city's broader development impact fee is collecting fees for the mainline infrastructure in the plan area, and the fee you see is just for, there's not a double dip. We are not collecting in the development impact fee and in the plan area fee for the mainline infrastructure in the plan area. So we did confirm that. And then there's a question about the percentage of responsibility Liberty Business Park would have for any future traffic control, a signal, roundabout, anything like that. And we have calculated it at 43%. So there was discussion last time about, you know, overall city was about 26%. There'd be an additional percentage. Now there's some question about, you know, sort of why that is. The development impact fee is a general, it's like your general plan to a specific plan. It is a general look at the development that occurs. And McDonald's, for instance, the last, you know, kind of development will have less of an impact than the Liberty Business Park on that intersection. And so there is some increase above, you know, kind of the citywide average. Now, the last piece in here that is not specifically in the staff report, but there was a question on, was the fee communicated to the applicant prior to moving forward? And so you will have a package at your dais, the spreadsheet here, and we can, we have a couple of copies additional if members of the public would like to see. But you'll see a list of communications that occurred. You know, first communication really is just providing the specific plan. There was no specific mention to the fee. But as we got into comment letters, one and two, in August and November of 23, the plan area fee was specifically mentioned that it would be a condition of approval as we move forward. And then the deemed complete letter, and then in the conditions of approval, which were included in the planning commission staff report. So starting really in probably, you know, April, May, in writing in August of 2023, and then throughout as we went forward in, into approval, this was mentioned, you know, at least five times in writing that this fee would be a requirement of the project. The other item, of course, was just the nexus study itself. We did have the chart, but not the full nexus study. That is now provided in the agenda package for everyone's review. That ends staff's, sorry for my call. That ends staff's presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Like I said, we do have Jess online, and we have Nick with our engineering team, Ardua, available in the audience.
Any questions for staff?
Just one question for me. If, if the boring under 120 comes in, I guess, what is the, what is the cost based on, the 800 or the million? And if it comes in less, is it a refund to the, to the developers that have already borne that, borne that cost?
It's based on, on the 800. And there is a process to credit a developer who installs infrastructure based on their fee. They would get a credit. If they install or oversize line that's not directly attributable to them, they would get future credits from future development. They would get reimbursed by future development if they install infrastructure upfront and they, it's less than their fee, then they would get a credit based on the fee that they, they would pay.
No?
The only question I have is the, the addition of the water tank. The first mention of it, assuming that is August 10, 2023, to the applicant?
No, I can't say that. Starting in August, we said a fee would be required. We haven't really got to what the fee was until recently, when, when we finally prepared the plan. So the addition of the fee is from '07 to today. So just like you, the applicant is, you know, sort of seeing it for the first time. We communicated that it was happening and the timing and all that, but, you know, no one's seen the fee. As we went through and we looked at the infrastructure that was to be required, we knew additional things from what was contemplated in '07 would be necessaries too strong of a word, would be desirable slash necessary.
Morning.
On the, as far as presenting to them upon everything that I'm seeing as far as this plan area fee was to be collected at building permit, did we collect a fee for a plan area? Or?
Not, not for the initial building permit. So they haven't pulled every building permit.
Right.
There, but we have not. And when we, in fact, maybe something we could have added is, in the first building permits, we said, you know, there would be an additional, not additional, but this fee if adopted on future building permits. Now, our intent is still to go back and collect it on the first building permit with the knowledge that they have, if that's planning commission and city council's direction.
How many acres was included in the first building permit?
Not exactly by acreage. We would, we would divide it up, but 20 is their total, total, total acreage there.
It was a, it was a site permit with subsequent later builds of structure?
Yes.
Okay. Is it the city's standard process to hold fees after permit?
To collect them after?
Yeah, to collect them after issuance.
Um, I mean, no. I think in a lot of ways, this is atypical. It's atypical to see your first development in a specific plan area 17 late, 17 years later. It's, it's atypical, and this is staff's issue, to adopt a fee after development has moved forward. You know, and there was choice there, right? The developer knew that this was coming, and there was choice to move forward for various reasons. And, you know, we can, we can ask them about that if that's germane to the conversation. Now, I will say, we do have deferred agreements where instead of that building permit, we collected at occupancy, for instance. I mean, I've seen that in the past. I don't know specifically if it's happened here. So there's, you know, it's not, it's not unheard of, but it's atypical.
I have a question. And this regards to Exhibit 2, where you're breaking down street improvements.
Do you have a page?
Overall, it would be the last two pages of the packet.
Last two, okay, yeah.
It'd be what, 69 and 70? So my question is, you know, you got the backbone streets, but there is, so that would be Ellery and Brennan and the cost to get to the back parcels that right now have no frontage. Are those, are those streets going to be developed? That's going to be based on the development? I got, I got another.
Yeah, if I understand, if I understand the question, let's take, you know, Farinelli or, you know, Bellator, right? When the developer develops that, there is internal roads.
Yes.
That is their, that are their responsibility.
Yes.
And, yeah, there will be some backbone roads that are in this fee and will be paid for sort of by all. If there are more minor roads or access, you know, roads that need to be specific for that development, then those will be the responsibility of each development as they come in.
Okay, so there'd have to be some right-of-way issues to get from a parcel that is currently landlocked to, so.
Potentially.
Okay, so that's all going to be, have to be worked out between, okay.
And that is not uncommon. I mean, you've seen it in large, specific plan areas. You've seen it in cities that have areas that develop all over. You know, you'd love to, to be perfectly uniform in your development, but that doesn't always happen. There's a little bit of hopscotching that goes on. So that's, that's not uncommon.
Other questions? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for participants who would like to speak on this project. Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Matt Weber. I represent the Yates, Mr. and Mrs. Yates and Weldway. And I spoke last time, and I want to highlight a couple of things. The, some of the questions you guys were asking earlier about the project being responsible for these fees, there was some communication, but there's, there was no indication that these fees would, at the time, we were pointed to, as you can see in the communications you were provided, the specific plan. The fees were not even, I don't know, a third or less that were outlined in that plan. And the city is now trying to tell us that we have to be responsible for essentially an open checkbook to the city for these fees that have not only increased because of what you guys have claimed are increased construction costs, but also added things that were not identified in anything before we received this packet. And those amounts are an extra, I believe, over $2.5 million worth of improvements that you are now trying to stick on a project that, you know, all the financial and the financing of this project is done at the front end, and you do a pro forma to try to build the project to make sure it's going to work. And then the city comes back and says, oh, by the way, you owe an additional million-plus dollars for this project on top of the substantial fees we're paying the city when we do pick up permits. You know, I think that is not only unfair, but I'm not sure it's going to be supportable by the city. But, so I want to back up more so and talk about the fee also generally. The city's proposed fee, now that we have the nexus study, is built on acreage, and the maximum amount of square foot can be built on that acreage. So the floor area ratio, but not every project, including ours, doesn't build to the maximum. And so you guys are charging a fee based on the maximum that can be built there instead of a specific fee that addresses that specific project's impact. And we think, you know, that, again, is a problem for this, this project or this proposal. A project that does not maximize the floor area ratio shouldn't be paying that maximum fee. So you're overcharging those people, including my client. There's no proportionality in this nexus study. It appears that there was no real analysis done to actually come up with the cost. It was just, you just took an inflation, and there's no data in here to indicate where these costs came from. Again, you're asking a substantial amount of money from the public, and you're putting a huge burden on these property owners that these property owners already have if they want to try to build something out there that will benefit the city, and you're putting that burden on them without really supporting that burden. And we understand that, you know, the city has to do the city's business, but we don't believe this is the appropriate way to do it. Finally, as everybody knows, there's one project out there, and for the past 17 years, there's been no projects. And now you have one project, and we're pretty convinced that if these fees are adopted by, if you recommend to the council, the council adopts those, there probably won't be another project for a long, long time, if it ever. And so if, you know, you were going to recommend this to the council, at a minimum, we'd recommend that they're not collected until you get critical mass. Because what you would do is you would force my client and other people to pay all this money in, that's going to sit in the city's coffers, that just sits there and is never going to be used because I believe the city can't start construction until it has a critical mass. And so, you know, those are some of the issues that we really have with this, this fee. And again, this, the sheer volume and the cost, what you've done is make it untenable to build out there. But thank you.
Yep.
I'll just, I'll respond to, to those issues, just to give information to the commission as you deliberate on this item. You know, the expectation on, on the fee, I can't address that. Absolutely, there were some, some added fees. Because of infrastructure added, we feel that it is important to have that infrastructure. The 2007 plan did not contemplate all the infrastructure that was needed. There are certainly things that we can do, you know, as each development comes in or as this one comes in, if, if there's this notion that, you know, it wasn't all shared with them, I think. The max FAR and sort of not, you know, project specific, I may have Jess jump in on that as well. Not all projects are going to be the same. And so there is a, a sort of. And so there is a sort of common approach that is developed in these plans across, you know, projects, right? And there's a dozen ways probably to collect a fee. There's no perfect way. If someone has a low FAR but a lot of acreage, you know, they want it on FAR. If it's reversed, they want their fee the opposite, you know, calculated the opposite way. There's no perfect option. And as each project comes in and there's different iterations, you'll see that, you know, there'll be some questions about the approach that was taken. And maybe Jess has some more. Let me go through a couple of the other ones. The analysis, the support. The CCI is a standard method used. It is atypical. We were not sugarcoating this. It is atypical to have a plan done in '07 and your first development in 2024. It is not ideal. You know, we could have gone through the significant analysis to look at the specific costs of each infrastructure improvement, and we think it would have been largely the same. We went through the effort to look at the CCI, to spot check unit costs. It would have been, you know, within a couple of percent, we believe. And then critical mass. Critical mass is a very challenging one. If the applicant is right and the next development doesn't occur for five, 10 years, and then you go back and start collecting a fee that, you know, should have been charged five or 10 years ago, you get into a very sticky situation. No one's going to plan for that. No one's going to want to pay a fee that, you know, should have been paid five or 10 years ago. If, you know, this is sort of, you know, the domino that tips the rest, and there is some development that occurs here in the next couple of years, I think, you know, that will largely be a moot point. You know, in terms of the fee, yes, no one wants to pay more than they think they should have to. My analogy here is a development, any development that moves forward, there is infrastructure costs. There will be infrastructure costs from Murphy Ranch if that moves forward. There's infrastructure costs of every project that moves forward. That is a fee that is, it's a cost that is unseen to the city. We don't see that. That is on their backend. They put that in. We don't see that cost. When the city adopts a fee in a specific plan area like this, you see it, and it feels like an additional fee. So I understand and I sympathize, but there has, in my mind, there has to be a way to install that infrastructure. We can't make one development do it. We can't wait until, I don't think the applicant wants to wait. We can't wait until there's a master developer who puts it in. There's no perfect option here, so you collect it as you go. Now, I understand, right? If, from their perspective, if you collect a fee and there's no development for five or 10 years, you're just sitting on that money, and it hasn't been put to good use. You know, these are the challenges associated with, you know, development in California and anywhere. So I wanted to touch on responses to those issues that were raised.
Questions?
Yeah, Jess is trying to talk. One second, Jess, we cannot hear you. And we will try to figure out why. All right, try again, Jess.
Does that sound any better?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. So I can speak to the proportionality point that was raised by the audience member, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. But the Nexus study justifies the maximum amount of fee that can be established. The specific plan, and I can't, I'm not an engineer, we're not an engineering firm, so I can't speak to the specifics of why and how the infrastructure that was specifically identified in the specific plan, I can't speak to the recent things beyond that, but it's based on the land uses and the layout and the land development that was identified in the specific plan. And so there is some balance between the infrastructure that's being built is for the maximum land uses, the FAR that is identified in the specific plan. And so the Nexus study justifies that proportionality. And that's how that is allocated across the varying land uses. The city can, which this was mentioned at the previous, the last planning commission meeting, the city can make a policy decision to establish lower fees. But what the Nexus study does is justifies the maximum amount that can be charged based on the identified land uses in the specific plan and the infrastructure identified as necessary to support what was identified when the specific plan was created. And so what is standard for the programs is that basis, and it, each development, as time goes on, you know, we can't predict exactly how the development is going to be built out. And so that's why the fee is based on the specific plan and what's the land uses that were identified in the specific plan.
Thank you, Jess. Any questions on that? Okay.
Any other questions from the audience or comments? Or anybody else online?
There is not. Just us and Jess.
Close the public hearing. Let's see if you have any questions from, no, no questions? Okay, close the hearing. Bring it back to the council or the commission.
I have a question for Jess, if I may. Number one, I appreciated the study, the expanded study, the more information, more explanation. I was a little bit puzzled by the fact that the figures from the 2023 page were altered. If that's in the past, why would they have changed from the first study to this study? And I'm looking at page 35.
Are you referring to Table 3-1?
3-1, yes.
Page 35 or 70? Yeah.
It's in the middle of 17 and 18.
It's on page 18. It's not where it says it is. It's not really on page 35.
The scan is confusing.
It's page 35 or 31.
I think that could just be mislabeled, Jalen.
Barbara, Commissioner Willis, do you want to identify with that number?
Well, I'm just puzzled. When I, from the study we got last month, my assumption would be that the $20,000 would have stayed the same. I'm not sure I understand why they changed.
Are you talking about the per which dollars? All of it?
Mm-hmm. If you compare this to what we had last month, many of the dollar amounts changed.
The traffic light, Jalen. So the initial cost of the traffic light. Raise the allocated cost. From that, additional $200,000 that was allocated in the traffic light at St. John's 20 and Brennan.
Yeah.
23 at the top of the table is just a mislabel.
Should be four, yeah. Based on commission comments, we went back and, you know, sort of reanalyzed the percentage share, and there's a different number.
Okay. Has the city been approached by any other entities to develop in the Liberty Business Park?
We have had two or three inquiries, not serious inquiries. We did a little research for them, and, you know, it never materialized.
Do you know why?
Just, no, actually. So, you know, and we get inquiries all over, right? The golf course, property on Campbell, property on St. John. We get inquiries periodically for various things and...
So there's no stage that anybody is in to come in and...
No, not in Liberty Business Park. No, there's, no.
With the economy today and the fact that this sat for 17 years, it is an unknown how long before somebody will seriously inquire and start developing. But this, the fee structure, I like the fact that we're putting thought into it now, and there's some flexibility built in. It'll be examined periodically, and if it needs to be corrected, it will be. And who knows when the next entity will come forward to build there? I would hope that the entity that's there now went in with its eyes wide open and knew what the situation was and was likely to be for a while.
Other comments?
Yeah. I heard what Commissioner Van Dyck said the last time out. It struck me that there are some issues of what I would call fairness. The new infrastructure that is included in this that was not included in the original plan. So if you're thinking of coming to us, Kalan, and you're looking at a business park that has X, Y, and Z, and you think you can do it, then it strikes me that it might not be entirely, you might not have planned for an additional water tank, an additional, I think you said $1.4 million if you add it all up. I'm more concerned about the water loop because that was entirely new. I don't know that that's, I don't know that that, if my little back of the envelope calculations are correct, that equals about $7,700 per acre or about $154,000, which is not even, what is that, 15% of the new fees? But it is 15%. And if we're collecting fees to build a new water tank and a new system, and we're going to sit there for 10 years and not build that system, and yet the business person is having to put in his own water system, that strikes me as double payment. And I understand how we have to collect fees in advance, but I think that setting some aside as maybe in advance or collect upon, I think there was a phrase used, "collect on occupancy," that sort of thing, that might, not occupancy, but collect when you tie into the water system. And then you have to pay. That part of it struck me as something that was not necessarily communicated by the city's plans, previous plans. The other things, it's clear, it's clear from the communications that there should have been an expectation of additional fees. So, but those seem to be on top of what we originally planned. And I'm sorry if you didn't, if I misremembered, if I'm misremembering your comments, so I apologize, but that's how I recall it. That's my comment.
Yeah, I'd say, I mean, this is, this park and this area has come up a lot over the last few years. And having a fee structure in place, I believe, is important. My reservation is not having something published that can be forecasted against when the percentage is double what the expectation is. So I don't, I, that's one piece, I guess, that I would say. The other piece is that determining proportion and how this comes to be, whether it's per acre, if that's defined by the use type, because I think some of these use types could benefit from possibly a higher dollar but a per square foot or a per usable space. Paying per acre when they're mandated to have drainage and retentions and all of that, it's tough to show the understanding, not only of their project, but the implications on what we're serving. Additionally, if they're required, which I'm assuming because I don't remember what the plans were, if I'm being honest, they would have to have fire suppression of some form for this project planned and onsite and how they're obtaining that service, I'm not 100% sure. But I don't think that that would change or their water, their design would not change later down the road as another development came in. They wouldn't go from a pump system or something similar onsite to tying in unless their system failed, which if it's going to be brand new, that's going to be years and years down the line as well. So maybe mapping out how these fees are assessed. I think the fees, like, yes, construction costs have gone up and costs for these utilities and services has gone up considerably over the last however many years this has been, since 2007. But if we, I don't think we should burden this specific project for the wonderful thought process that has gone into the development of what we need to put there. I don't want to, I don't want to like distract from the fact that it's really good that this conversation is happening, but through that development has also added millions of dollars to these impact fees, which it's good that we're catching it now, but I don't... But I don't know that it should impact this project mainly because of the working in the industry and understanding that people make decisions to move here based on a perform, based on an understanding of return on investment. And this could, I mean, even for a small business or something like that, it would, it could blow it out of the water. And I think we want to be good for business coming into town.
My only comment is, and Ronnie mentioned, prices have escalated. Shortly after COVID, it went out of sight. And on page three of four, it talks about that, I guess, this Assembly Bill 602 requires the NEXUS update every eight years. I feel more comfortable doing it more frequently, like maybe every four years. That's one thing. And then the other question is, at what point would there be a refund to somebody coming into this business park based on the fees that they would have to pay upfront before they come on in? When would those fees be refunded if there is less cost than anticipated?
I think there's too many iterations of that question to specifically answer it. You try to get it right as you're collecting the fee. And maybe I can walk through a couple of options we do have. You try to get it right. Now, I think what you're saying is if in four years, we update the fee and then it's lower, you know, is there sort of this payback? I think there's a lot of factors to determine on that sort of what-if scenario. And I couldn't give you a good answer because, again, there's a myriad of options. Typically, typically, fees are updated and then look forward. They don't necessarily look back, right? They're really to update to make sure you're current with what's happening. You don't want to have a fee that's, you know, adopted 10 years ago and it's not in the realm, right? Things have come down or they've gone up, you know, on the city side. So they typically look forward. I think you try to get it right when you collect it.
Well, it's a wire act because you don't want to charge too much to discourage people coming in. But on the flip side, you don't want to charge too little and then you don't have the money to put the rest of the improvements that you need in.
Yeah. You know, and I know we all know this. This is a fee in lieu of the installation of broader infrastructure, right? This is a fee in lieu of installing that. Again, you have a smaller development. If this was just a 20-acre development, you know, they would put in all the infrastructure associated with that 20 acres, all the water lines, all the sewer lines, you know, all of that. But you can't do that in a specific plan area that's 180 acres. And so this is a fee in lieu of the installation of that infrastructure. That is common and usable by all. So that I do understand. I'll just walk through a couple of options. If there's hesitancy on, you know, the fairness or charging it at first, not knowing if there's going to be future development down the line. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. Jess is right. You charge at the maximum allowable rate. Think about it in reverse, you know, what if we were to charge at 50% of the FAR? Then what if someone's above it? You know, do you add on? No, not necessarily. So what we could do is we have the, if it was adopted, we have the maximum allowable rate. And let's just say that's one or 100%. If someone came in at FAR at 50, you know, we could do the analysis and reduce it proportionally compared to their FAR. And I'm trying to look at Jess to see if he's like shaking his head adamantly that that would not work. But that would, well, let's have him jump in to see if I'm not off base and maybe I am.
Now, a question I'm prepared to answer in terms of if it may be legally justifiable. And I think you know there are instances in other fee programs in other areas that if there is a development above your obligation or above, you know, the city, they, you know, are, they do, the city has, they're obligated to pay a higher fee.
Well, Jess, Jess, what if we, what if, my question was if it was adopted at the maximum FAR and a developer built under that FAR, could you discount it at the lower FAR? Or would you not fully cost-recover your infrastructure?
Not sure I have an answer for that currently. But it's something I'm, I can definitely get to, come back to it. I think in terms of, you know, what we need to be established should need ordinance.
Okay, we won't belabor that one. That's why you don't think on the fly sometimes. So other ones that we do know could work to spur development in this area, the council did approve a deferred utilities agreement, which, you know, the applicant capitalized on to push, you know, the extension of infrastructure and the connection to infrastructure. We could certainly do some sort of deferral if the council, and it's a council and a policy-level decision, if the council chose. The other thing that the council has the option to do, I'm not suggesting it's wise or that they would do this, I'm just presenting options, is if it was adopted at the 100% rate, of course, you could, for a time being, or for certain projects or whatever, collect a lesser fee, 80%, 75% of the fee, if that was something that the council wanted to do. So those are two legitimate options, not sure about the first one, so just strike that from the record. But those are two legitimate options to, you know, either push out the payment of the fee or to reduce that fee.
That's a city council decision, not a planning commission.
Well, we could recommend it.
Exactly. It's not a, it's not a, yes, it's not a planning commission purview question, but your, you know, charge here is to make a recommendation based on, you know, your knowledge and expertise in these areas to the city council and they can take it or not.
So we could approve what's before us and recommend to the city council that they defer?
Yeah.
And it's up to their decision how they want to go.
I'd like to understand a little more about what we'd be deferring. Are we talking about deferring a collection of the increased fees? Or are we just talking about deferring portions of the increased fees? Or how would that work?
A typical model to defer a fee would say you collect 20% of building permit and then 20% for the next four years thereafter. So you're spreading out that fee. There is a little bit of, excuse me, different dynamic here where maybe there's comfort in the base fee, but these added, you know, fees from 2007 are, you know, less than, you know, looked favorably upon. Get myself in trouble thinking on the fly again. You know, I think it might collect less policy decision for this project in particular. Perhaps the council could say, you know, we're going to collect the fee less the, you know, their portion of the 2.5 because it was not specifically stated to them upfront. And, you know, they went into this development thinking the fee was going to be X and, you know, the city added 2.5 million. So I think, I think, you know, something like that could work because there's, you know, there's sort of a reason, you know, there's a very specific reason on why that occurred.
Can we recommend the approval of this for new projects after adoption by city council? That would, if I'm understanding, sorry, if I'm understanding it correctly, that would require them to pay the fees in accordance with the 2007 numbers. It's not saying they're not paying anything, but it's saying that on projects or applications submitted for new construction, these fees would then apply after it's been adopted.
So let's just make sure we all understand. So for this applicant, the fee lasts the 2.5 million? And then for every future applicant, the full fee? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying essentially yes, because then if someone's coming to build something, they have a full understanding of the potential cost. What I'm saying is that they may not, that them not having a full understanding or something on record, if we're able to do that, I hear that we're able to recommend, I mean, everything that we're doing here is a recommendation. We're not able to, like, make this in finality, but to put on record that the due diligence over the last 10-plus years, 16 years, however long it's been, should not be on the onus of the first applicant. And sometimes it's, you know, early bird gets the worm.
Just what you're saying is you'd recommend that this development, because they weren't made aware of the added $2.5 million worth of infrastructure, would pay a fee that was adopted minus their portion of that, of the 2.5 million, the tank, the sound wall, the undergrounding.
I would just be careful about saying that the city did not inform about that possibility.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that they did or didn't in what I'm asking. I'm trying to clarify what is capable of being recommended at this point. We have been presented with, if I look at the initial couple of pages of the recommendation, it references 2007 number being $16,000 per acre and then an increase to $32,000 per acre and then I heard $48,000 per acre. I want to know which one was on record. I don't know what that is, aside from the 2 point whatever million dollars in increase since submission of the application. I don't, that's what I don't understand and what I'm looking for clarification.
I would say none of those numbers were on record.
Okay.
The specific plan was provided to the applicant. The applicant might have looked and saw a number. The 32,000 and the 48,000 are new numbers based on this plan. You know, we may be getting a little far. I do, I think we could absolutely make an argument that no one would assume the costs today are the same as they were 2007. I don't think we could make, you know, an argument that passed a sniff test that said someone would think it was the same as then. We could make an argument that says, hey, in looking at this, the city has added infrastructure that was not, you know, intimately known to the development as they move forward. And therefore, you know, I think you could discount that.
Yeah, so, okay, so that's, okay, I can follow that logic based on, so what you're saying or what I'm hearing you say is that this $2.5 million in adds came after the submission of their permit or the issuance of these letters and whatnot, that the increase in cost from 2007 to 2023, or whenever they submitted this application, is going to be an understanding or the permit, yeah, I guess it's '24. It would be, it would be, I don't want to say safe to assume the changes in cost, but the increase based on whatever was on that NEXUS report or the report that developed those 2007 numbers, those line items specifically?
That's one reason you do the NEXUS report, to make sure that it's proportional and it's just the way that California does development, to make sure that one developer doesn't bear the brunt. And it is reasonable to have that be the understood way that we go forward with development.
So a motion might read something along the lines of the planning commission recommends the approval of Liberty Business Park-specific fee program. For the project currently underway, fees for improvements not contemplated by the 2007 plan should be deferred until such time as those components are completed. Would that satisfy the needs, the city's needs?
Yes. I just want to specify for clarity. I think there was a twist to that a little bit in how you read it or make sure everyone's on the same page, anyone who would second or vote for that motion. You said, I think, deferred until such time as the applicant connected.
Actually said that those components are completed, those components of the plan, water tank, et cetera.
That would put the city out in dollars to develop that and then go back and try to...
For one tenant.
For one tenant.
Yeah, for one tenant.
Yeah, and I think by nature of the argument, if you collect after it's completed, that means you have all the money needed to complete it, but you're missing a portion of that money to complete it. So, you know, maybe a little bit, you know, kind of circular argument. You know, as we discussed before, I do think an argument could be made that the 2.5 was unknown at the time and therefore this development would not or could not or should not pay that if that is where this commission is heading. I think that would be fair. Now, what you could also do is defer the overall fee if you chose to do that as well. But if you collect after it's completed, one, that could be many, many years down the road, it'd be hard to collect whatever that money is 20 years down the road. And again, it would have to be completed, which means you'd have all the money. I won't rehash that again.
Is it important to say by collecting a fee at each new building permit associated with the development, with the exception of the current occupant whose fees will be deferred initially a certain percentage and then the rest of the payments to be deferred? So that there's an understanding that the subsequent developers don't fall into the same category and he doesn't fall into the other category?
Would that set a precedent that is poor?
That's the problem.
Yeah, that's why I'm trying to see what, because if fees were expected to be implied, which the documentation is... to be implied, which the documentation is there, as a contractor, I don't like it, but it's there. If the, the fees were expected to be implied, if we defer something and it changes, isn't there an argument later to, to fight the difference?
In fact, other developers will make that argument. They'll watch this commission meeting and make the exact same argument that's being made right now.
I think, so the, the 16,000 per acre was the 2007 study. Current study before the adds was 32,000 per acre.
Yes, bring the 07 dollars forward, CCI, spot check. Yeah, basically CCI at that point, 32,000.
And then getting to the 48,000 per acre is because of these adds, which maybe wasn't communicated to the developer. They didn't, maybe they didn't understand the, the, the gravity of it.
Yeah, I, I don't want to, I don't want to split a hair, but the thing that was communicated to the developer is that the city would be moving forward with a planned area fee. So nothing, you know, there wasn't, hey, it's going to be what's in '07. There was nothing communicated other than, and starting in August of '23, right? There was nothing other, nothing communicated other than there will be a planned area fee for this project.
Could there be a, I'm just thinking, a way to have this applicant pay the 32,000 per acre? And then the subsequent development, it would be more than the 48,000 because that two and a half million would be spread across to everybody else. So maybe, maybe everybody else is at, I don't know, 52,000 per acre.
I, I think we couldn't do that. You'd just, you'd cut your loss. You'd just, you'd, you'd cut your loss. And if that's what the commission and council wanted to do, you'd sort of cut your loss and you'd just not quite be there. But again, we don't know what inflation and, and various things are, are going to do over time. But yes, I, I do think that is a place that we've gotten that I think is justifiable that because of the dynamics of this development and not knowing that, you know, sort of additional fee that was added from '07 to now, that we could charge the lesser rate, let's say the 32, minus 2.5 million.
But the subsequent developments would have to pay more to make up for that.
No, you, you, you couldn't do that. Cutting your loss means you just, whatever that portion is, you just wouldn't collect it.
Or you could defer the fee.
Yes, you, you couldn't make it up on future development because that would be unfair to future development, you know, because he didn't pay, he, because that applicant didn't pay, you know, that means we pay more than.
They would know what they're getting into.
I mean, let's be careful. This developer knew what they're getting into. It's, they just didn't know the amount. But the city was very, very clear. I mean, the city did everything proper in terms of, of setting the expectation that there will be a fee. Now, if the city hadn't have included that language of qualification, then it'd be 100% fair to say, well, we had no idea.
The laws of NEXIS and proportionality, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean you only knew. That's not the, that's not the most important point, that you knew. It's that you are, you are paying your fair share of the infrastructure. And so if someone else isn't paying and you're paying more, whether you knew or not, you're paying more than your fair share.
So essentially, if we were, if we were to recommend that they pay based on the $32,000 rate per square, per acre, sorry, we would be accepting the lost, loss of about $300,000 of the total, based on the math, quick math on 20 acres times the 16, times the 32, and times the 48. That, that would just be, it would, it would have to be done and, and we would have to proceed with that loss of this specific project? Or are you saying that if we approve this project on this fee because it's, it was already in motion prior to adoption? Can we do that is, I guess, my question? Can we approve this with a, a recommendation that this applicant was, the, the building application or whatever was submitted prior to adoption? That added, that new construction followed the new fees?
I don't like that language because surely it's going to be used against this. You know, not in this context, probably in some different contexts that, because the city gets to, you know, change fees. And if you're using that service, then you have to pay the new fee. So it, it's, it's pretty cut and dry that, that the city could do precisely what it is doing today and the city does this all in all kinds of different contexts.
I would, I would say, what, what do we say?
Well, consider you might have somebody paying a fee to use like a community service and then the, the fee goes up. And then sometimes the council will provide a, a waiver or, I, I've written this ordinance before, so I know it's happened. But that's one of those things that happens, right? The fee could go up and, you know, it's unfortunate, but then the taxpayers would have to bear the, the, the difference if the user doesn't pay for it. That's generally the only municipal sort of ironclad economic rule is that it's going to be financed by somebody, it's not a free lunch. So the developer pays for it, or the taxpayers pay for it, or there's a grant. But oftentimes, it's just one of those things. Whereas here, especially with new construction, this is a part of the equation when you're in new construction.
I don't want to set a precedent of, of incurring a loss.
The challenge is that you would set a precedent of incurring a loss. I think staff, to be clear, did absolutely the right thing in making sure that this developer understood that the fee would be set at some point. So it's sort of something that you're expecting to have happen. A lot of times, put a contingency budget together, but everyone runs their, their business differently. But the city couldn't have done it
I don't think that.
Anywhere reasonably than they did.
Yeah, I don't think that what I'm, what I'm, what I'm asking is stating that it wasn't known that there was a fee to be paid or that we want to incur a loss. What I, what I'm asking is, is how, how we, we make a motion on something like this that specifically impacts the first person, or the first project in this development? That, that's all I'm, I don't know how, I don't know how to do this without, without setting some form of a precedent and, and knowing that we haven't, we've, we've spent a lot of time in the, the development or the requirements on the development have grown.
So I, I think, I mean, we've, we've, one, we've probably had ample conversation and depending on council, I mean, people will know why a decision was made on a specific development. What you could do to avoid the precedent setting issue is recommend fee approval onto council. Council would recommend fee approval and direct staff on the first development to charge, you know, the fee less the $2.5 million of added infrastructure from the '07 study. So the action is adopting the fee as stated in the NEXIS study. And the direction to the city, based on the dynamics of this development, is to work with them specifically on the fee, collecting the, the lesser fee. Now, you still don't collect the full freight there. But it's, you know, it's a justifiable action from a technical standpoint.
And just to, what I understand, you're giving SAP the flexibility to make sure that the city is still recovering and putting a proportional and appropriate fee in place that will hit every, every developer the same in that project.
To be clear, we're making a recommendation for council to put staff in the order. They could not do it too. Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I'm still stuck on the word deferred and waiver, the words waiver and deferred. Waiver means we're never going to collect those fees, correct? But if we were to use the term deferred, that means that we would collect those fees at the time the applicant connects to the, the infrastructure. Correct?
They would have to apply to connect, correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, there's no trigger for the city to collect. Maybe there is. But there's a little bit of, of apples and oranges, maybe. The added infrastructure, a water tank, sound wall, undergrounding utilities, gateway monumentation is not the thing that they will connect to later necessarily, the water system or the sewer system. And so there's a little bit of, of apple and orange there.
But the biggest expenses they would have to connect to. As the monumentation is, the undergrounding is, I don't remember exactly how much that was, but it's nowhere near as, as much as the water tank slash well and, and the sewer system. And there's absolutely no guarantee unless we get additional occupants that those are ever going to be completed. After 17 years.
It is, it is a crystal ball moment. I mean, is it another 17 years until the next development or, or is this the domino that, you know?
Well, we know it's eight years for another study hopefully. And that's where it'll all come back up. That's, that's the only finite information that I can see.
Well, I want to be positive and think that there's some synergy going on there now because we got a development coming on there. We have more buildings going up, you know? The challenge is, let's, let's see if we can get everything else in place that's going to encourage other development to come, come to Liberty Park. You got a site that sits vacant for 17 years, no one's going to jump. You get somebody starting to build, it's like, hey, that, that looks interesting. Let me do some research.
Which is why I would like to see the term deferred used because that would mean that eventually the applicant would pay fair share.
The, the problem that I see with that is how, how do you put a timeline on that deference legally? Like, I don't, I don't know how you would.
I think the timeline is just simply when it's complete.
Yeah, but that, that would have to outlive, or the, the current project would have to outlive the timeline for that to function.
Generally, these are done by a year. You pick a year, two, five, 10 is pushing it, I'd say. Or a later trigger. In homes, a later trigger is, is building permit is the first trigger, occupancy is, is the later trigger, right? A building permit, you're at risk. At occupancy, you've sold that house, you've generated money, you can pay the fee. So there's, it's either time or later trigger.
We already have a trigger, don't we, eight years?
Well, that's, that's the time that we would update the fee.
The fee would be updated at that point.
Wouldn't that be a review? Couldn't that serve as a review?
I would rather look at four years.
Okay, four years, I agree. Four years might be better.
No, not, no, not necessarily. Because sometimes these, most of the time, these fees are, are fee update looking forward. It, we wouldn't be looking back on how we did, you know, collecting that fee compared to where we're at. So, but if, and eight, you know, I, I think eight's pushing it a little bit. But, you know, you could pick a year. Two, four, six?
Do I hear a motion from anybody?
I haven't heard one.
What if I make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council that we, they adopt the planned area fee and implement the program by directing city staff to collect a fee at each new building permit associated with the development in the Liberty Business Park area? No deferral, no whatever, city staff is going to be directed by city council to pass along the fee amount. Does that say it?
What, I mean, so that is absolutely an option on the table. It, it's, it's just.
Okay.
No, it is an option on the table to collect the full fee.
Yeah, I thought that sounds like.
You made a motion? I hear a second. Dies. Anybody else have a suggestion?
I read mine. There's a lot of argument about it, so I'm not sure it's suitable.
Want to change it anyway?
How to change it and make it work? I mean, it would be. Recommend to the city council that you approve the Liberty Business Park specific plan fee program. Fees for improvements not contemplated by the 2007 plan for the project currently underway should be deferred until such time as, shall be deferred, consideration of those fees should be deferred until 2028.
So you want to use the 2007 numbers?
Well, I'm saying that, no, not the numbers, but not contemplated, the improvements not contemplated. That would mean the, the water tank slash well slash undergrounding slash, what was the other one? Sound walls.
Monumentation.
Monumentation, thank you.
So all of it be deferred?
Well, for this specific project.
Until when?
Well, I would, my preference is until it's, until it's completed, at which time the applicant would be benefiting from it.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can? Because, I mean, essentially, they, they got a deferral on the connection to utilities for how many years? Whatever that is?
Up, up to five if no one develops. Two if someone else comes in and 180 days if the city extends infrastructure. So the, the most is five years.
Motion, I'm sorry. Did you want to finish your motion?
I think I did finish it. I'm, I, I think we got stuck at the word completed. Such time as, or subject to review, maybe we should say deferred, subject to review at all those fees should be deferred, subject to review in 2028 or, or 2029, whatever.
So let, let's look at intent versus crafting the full motion. Your intent is adopt the fee, defer Your intent is adopt the fee, defer the portion of the fee of infrastructure that's not in '07 for this development, and then all new development pay the full fee. So it's adopt the, defer the $2.5 million for a time period, and all future development moves forward.
Moves forward under the proposed fee schedule.
So I'll just say that's similar, I'll say council member Van Dyke, to your thought, but instead of a waiver, which is what I'm hearing from you, there's a deferral of the $2.5 million that wasn't maybe intimately known to the developer at the time. And we will, I think, just be careful of the language, you know, if we update in eight years and there's a new technology, or a new something else, or we learn something about the infrastructure and we need, I mean, we could absolutely update the NEXA study at that time to add infrastructure, you know, based on new knowledge. So, you know, we'll just be careful of the language in the motion, but if your intent is to defer that portion of the fee, that again is a justifiable action.
Let me just take a consensus here. So is everybody in agreement or not interested in deferring the additional fees?
Maybe, maybe, just, maybe we just have a motion. The intent of the motion is made, I think we've said it enough where we get it, let's have a second, just so we're not, you know, conferring amongst a body here. But there's a motion, you can call for a second and then see if that moves forward.
Who's presenting the motion?
I think I am.
Can I ask one more question before we? So if we were to defer it for five years, isn't there the possibility that we might need it before that, if development occurs?
It would not be uncommon for a city to install infrastructure and then collect. It's not, it's not the only source of funding, right? And so, you know, there's a way the city can float it and then get reimbursed. I mean, for instance, we have floated the cost of the specific plan, and one of the, you know, nominal fees in here is the cost of the specific plan, that's already happened, right? So this is just in that same vein.
It doesn't put the city at a big financial risk if development is spurred in 18 months and you don't collect their fees for another three and a half years?
You know, I don't want to go that far, because who knows what happens at that time, but it wouldn't be uncommon, and the dollar amount we're talking about, no, I don't believe so.
Does it set a precedence for future deference on applications? Because that's my concern with the deference. For me, the waiver is cleaner, because we have a, we have a more developed, not more developed scope, I don't know how to phrase this, but to me, the waiver is cleaner for this application, being that we can state that the impact fees go on to newer applications after the date that it's accepted, versus allowing a waiver, or not a waiver, a deference, we could have somebody come in stating that they didn't understand something, or stating that we're adding something that we have the right to do, the city has a right to add or develop, further develop improvements and fees. So is it, is it better to just waive it on this one, so that we can collect on the others? You say no.
I mean, it makes me uncomfortable, because I would make the argument, if I came in after this, to say that it's not proportional, that you actually had somebody pay less than I have to pay as a follow-on. But, so, you know, the cleanest thing to do is to adopt the fee and then allow the city manager to negotiate, or to work things out in a way that gives some relief to an existing occupant, or however you want to phrase it. But that's the cleanest thing you can do, is provide some flexibility to the city manager to provide relief that's proportional to the, to the current occupant's situation.
And direct answer to your question, I don't, I don't think there's any precedent, better scenario of waiving versus deferring.
Yeah, I just keep getting like feedback, like you're saying the wrong thing, we didn't do this wrong, which I understand. So I want to make sure that through this motion, we're not creating havoc for the future, because this is complicated.
Assuming people aren't watching the Escalon planning commission meeting and, you know, taking notes for future arguments, that's, I would agree with.
Are you sure you read this?
Yes.
To that point, I mean, we're sort of battling two fronts. We're trying to understand what the commission wants to recommend, and also protecting the city a little bit in terms of, you know, future, future actions. So sometimes they intertwine and overlap.
If I ask Barbara to read this again and get feedback on where the hesitance is.
Okay, yeah, perhaps we misunderstood.
I make a motion that the planning commission recommend to the city council that they adopt the planned area fee and implement the program by directing city staff to collect a fee at each new building permit associated with development in the Liberty Business Park area. Okay, so I'm not making the exception for the current occupant of the development, but still directing city staff to, you could add with the exception of the current.
Directing city staff to have, to work with the current. I think, I think I understood, and maybe the commission understood, that you were not carving out an exception for this development, that you were implementing at the full rate for every development, including the existing applicant.
Yeah.
Okay. So then, then I think, I think that motion didn't get a second. So that is the full 48,000, let's just say 48,000 per acre for every development, including the existing one, which is an absolutely viable option, it just, I think it didn't get a second.
You just reread it, or did you?
He asked me to.
Yeah.
So that wasn't a motion, though?
Yeah, well, I mean, it sounds, so you're not looking to defer or waive any fees?
Well, if we're directing city staff.
Of the city staff, at their discretion?
At their discretion, could add that.
Yeah, the part I didn't quite understand, so you're saying at occupancy, or?
Well, I'm reading what's on the paper, as far as the next step.
Yeah, we're reading.
At each new building permit associated with development in the, so, yeah, could be.
At occupancy and direct city manager to provide relief as necessary, or you could...
Your phraseology is so much better than mine.
Well, the key is proportional relief to the existing applicant, because we want to make sure that there's reasonableness, proportionality, and that the city, and that the city manager does have the ability to determine that in the specific situation.
Okay, that's your intent? Proportional relief?
I hear a second on that motion.
Does that one, it says occupancy in the motion? Because occupancy for residential makes sense, they get to live.
Did you use the word occupancy?
I didn't use it in there, but.
Okay.
No. With each new building permit.
Permit, okay.
Yeah.
I still am stuck.
Okay, so we have a motion, do I hear a second?
So Commissioner Dunbar, you could do a friendly amendment?
Well, I think it's different. I think we should call for a second first, if there's someone.
We have a second.
I'll second. Can I put the amendment about reviewing this document every four years?
The assembly bill says every eight, but we're free to alter that?
Yes.
No more than, no more than.
More than eight, okay.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second. I'll call.
Okay, I don't want to belabor, I just really want to make sure I get it right. Let's just use the numbers we've known.
Okay.
So adopt the fee at roughly the 48,000, and provide direction to staff to work with the current applicant for their fee at closer to the 32,000. Is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just want to make sure we understand the intent of the motion.
We have.
I have a question about that. How, is that binding? I mean.
Nothing binding. City council has to approve it.
Yeah, well, okay, but I mean.
So your recommendation on to the city council, city council can direct staff to work with the applicant. We have, in full voice here, suggested that that is a justifiable provision of this fee adoption because of the dynamic of the applicant and where they are in the process.
Can you repeat back what the motion is now?
I don't know.
I don't, or at least what was heard of the motion. I want to, I want to make sure that I understand what staff is receiving.
Adopting the planned area fee and recommending to city council that they direct city staff as far as collecting the fee at each new building permit associated with the business park, the 48,000 and the 32,000?
We won't put the numbers in the motion, but.
And with a, and review every four years?
Every four-year review.
And so the direction of staff is proportional and reasonable?
Proportional and reasonable.
I think it is the idea that I will say you, Commissioner Van Dyke, brought up. I think it's, it's the knowledge that new infrastructure was added from the study, the '07 study, which was provided to them, and they were well aware of, late in the process, and therefore, there's some flexibility at the staff level to collect a fee that is lesser proportionally than the full fee.
Okay.
So I have a motion and a second. Ready for a vote? Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Four ayes, one opposed. Motion carried. Oh, boy.
There's three more items.
Is Jess still there?
Jess is still here, yes.
Thank you for your work, Jess.
Yes, thank you.
It's a pleasure working with Jalen and the city staff, so appreciate your gratitude and stuff, happy to hear and answer questions.
Thank you, Jess.
Thank you, Nick.
Administrative matters are up now on the agenda. We did, I think I probably mentioned this last time, we did hold a community workshop on the Murphy Ranch project. We expect that application to move forward to the planning commission in the coming months. You may have seen the sign board that is out there on the site. It is facing both 120 and Brennan, per the code. So in the next couple of months, we expect that to move forward. Council did last night direct staff to look into holding some sort of additional information meeting for the public, with the thought that was brought up by a member of the public that the questions that were asked in the workshop, not all were answered. Staff's response to that is they will be answered through the approval process into planning commission and then on to city council. There was some desire of council to explore the option of having a preliminary something, some additional information being shared with the public prior to a planning commission meeting. So we are exploring the options. I don't know what that looks like yet, but we will keep you abreast of those issues. Other than that, I don't, can't think of anything else. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them, anything you have thought of, but I don't have anything else at this time.
Matters presented from the public, the audience? Nope. Staff communications?
None. Oh, I thought that was staff communication, none other.
Administrative first, that's the.
No, administrative is any other items that aren't public hearings, so, so no other items.
Communication?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
To everyone.
And a safe and Happy New Year to all.
Yes, indeed.
All right. You're in the meeting? All in favor?
I'll relax now.
I got to vote what I want, at least.